All rise, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good early evening, everyone. We had a budget work session meeting, the first of our year, at 3 o'clock today, followed by an executive session, and here we are at our regular meeting.
What did you discuss in your executive session?
Oh, yes, thank you. We discussed some personnel matters in our executive session and a matter of real estate. Okay, good enough? Good enough, Mr. Calello?
No comment.
Okay, so we have a presentation from Kids Castle and the I Run For Life group. Yes, they all here? Mr. Salvati?
Hello? I'm Joe Salvati, the chairman of the Friends of Kids Castle group, and I'm here today as a representative of Kids Castle to thank the children from the I Run For Life Jamison Elementary School team. Together, they chose Kids Castle as the recipient of donations they raised through their fundraising event. This was no ordinary event. It was extraordinary. But instead of standing here and telling you about it, let's have the children show you themselves through the short video that was created. Dave, could you get the license?
Everyone see?
Yes.
Four, three, two.
Can I get a safe Kids Castle?
Kids Castle!
All right, great job!
Are you ready?
Amazing. Oops, it's playing again. Doesn't want to stop.
Are there some representatives here from I Run For Life?
Yeah, hold on a second. So in addition to thanking the children, I also like to thank Jen Alvarez, their leader, and the director of the I Run For Life Jamison Elementary School team, who organized and ran this event. And I'd like to thank the parents of these children, who supported them with encouragement and their donations. So please join me in another round of applause for all of you. I'd like to ask the supervisors to join us so we can take a picture with this presentation.
Upside down.
Come, wait, wait, come behind the chair.
Everybody get together, you guys got kids.
Are we all here? Let's look at the camera.
We got everybody in there, everybody smile. It's Kids Castle, Kids Castle.
Did you get it?
I think I'm getting one. All right, I got a little. Thanks, guys. Good job!
That's it for me.
Okay, thank you.
I was just informed that we have an anonymous match to this donation.
Oh, wow.
So what they raised is now double for Kids Castle. I think I should show up to more supervisors.
Thank you, Joe. As always, you just deliver, you constantly deliver, and it's always entertaining, so thank you.
Great video.
Okay, you follow that, all right. Is Keith Fenimore here? Sorry, Keith. Where's your video?
unrelated to why I'm here today. First off, I'm Keith Fenimore from 71 Oak Drive. I helped run the I Run For Life program at OLMC this year, and based off of the Jamison kids, I think we have to step it up. So that was pretty awesome. I am the... Let me open the thing here. I am the co-founder and director of a nonprofit called Pine to Pink, and we're launching in Doylestown this October. So, all right, there we go. You got it? So Pine to Pink, its mission is to raise money for breast cancer patients in treatment and recovery on the local level. It's a month-long program, and I'm a 501(c)(3). So there are 5,400 Pine Streets across the US. Doylestown is going to become the first to transform Pine Street to Pink Street in an effort to help breast cancer patients in treatment and recovery on the local level. I am going to be altering the sign from Scout Way up to Court at these six different locations, and we'll have the pink K on the street again for the month of October. That's one of the initiatives. Another initiative within Pine to Pink is our app, and it's kind of a layered process here, but the idea is that we're going to take virtual ribbons, and we're going to hide them in retail stores and points of interest all around town. I think a secondary benefit to this is going to be the footfall and the drive of commerce that hopefully it's going to provide for people to come to town and engage. You would download the app for free. You can make a donation, but you don't have to make a donation or to do the scavenger hunt. And we're going to have ribbons from the Doylestown Hospital, the OLMC, to the Boy Scouts, to Font Castle. So there's a little bit of a wellness piece to this, where you're going to be with your family, walking miles and collecting these ribbons, also getting in Busy Bee and engaging with the local retailers. I feel that I'm going to unearth an interesting demo of people that are going to give to charity that probably or maybe ordinarily wouldn't give because of this kind of engaging, immersive, interactive piece with the app. And I'm working with Discover Doylestown and kind of going through the process of figuring out where our ribbons are going to be, who wants to participate. There's no cost to participate, trying to engage everybody. And, yeah, so there's that. And I just said all of the things that just appeared there, so there's no need to repeat it. So during this virtual interactive piece with the phone, you'll be able to hold it up, and the sidewalks will appear pink as well through your phone up Pine and State and Main. Also, some of the storefront facades will be pink. I speak to intelligent people every day that have great ideas, that help formulate what this thing is going to be, and one of those people is Ryan Mannion. And when I was talking to her, she said, hey, how about the practical aspect of pink? Turn things pink, so if you don't have the phone, there's Doylestown shining for the month of October. So I have partners in this, in the Mercer and the Mishner and the County Theater, and I'm talking to everybody at the county and hospital to literally go pink during the month. And I wanted to incentivize the local retailers to do it as well, so I reached out to Doylestown Electric, and they're going to provide pink light bulbs during the month of October to anyone who asks from Pine to Pink at cost. So I couldn't get it free, but I did the best I could. And again, it's through the app. The ribbons would elicit personal stories about local breast cancer survivors and those that are in treatment and recovery. You know, obviously, I think people talk about the awareness piece, and I think we're all aware of breast cancer at this point. You know, I'm really looking... My mission was help... I helped find the mission through Dr. Angotti at Doylestown Health, who is the preeminent breast surgeon there. And there's this sector of people in treatment and recovery that really need assistance. So the money is earmarked for them, and there's three pieces that I'd like to try to affect. One is to be able to allow people to purchase cold caps, which are expensive, not covered by insurance, but when worn can retain 70% of your hair during chemo. The second is treatment transportation, because just getting to and from can be a problem. And the third is kind of bridging the gap with out-of-pocket expenses for those that can't afford the medication and the treatments. So those are the areas that I'm looking to focus on for this year. And they'll be ever-changing. I want to do this each year, I want to grow it each year. I want to scale it nationwide, starting in Doylestown with 5,400 Pine Streets across the US. I think it's a... It makes good sense. It's a scalable, helpful program. These are the people that are supportive of it already and are behind me. I live in the township. I, you know, I've met with Stephanie and Dave, and we wanted to try to find out how to integrate the township in a productive way that would be kind of cool for everybody. Because of the lighting aspect, there are three entrance points to town. I don't have it in the deck, but Triangle Park here that everyone's aware of, West State Street, you have lights there in the township, and also North Main. And we thought that might be a good place to start the conversation and say, can the bulbs get changed to pink for the month? And then what else can we do? You know, who else has ideas that want to add to this? And where else can it go? So I just wanted to present it today to get the wheels turning, and then we can hopefully go from there.
Wow. Exciting!
Yeah, and I'll leave you with two things. I have two events that are in September as kind of awareness events. If this was something that had happened every year and everyone knew about, it wouldn't necessarily be necessary, but I feel it is for this year. We're going to be hosting... The county is giving me a movie night on September 13th, where the box office proceeds will go to Pine to Pink. We'll screen the movie and have a Q&amp;A after with myself and a few other people attached to the program. And then on the 22nd, I met with Cornerstone, I met with the Mercer. I saw an opportunity to combine the two, and so we're having a yoga class on the grass at the Mercer on the lawn, September 22nd at 10:00 a.m. And all the proceeds for $25 donation or more will go to Pine to Pink, and they'll get admission to the museum, and they'll get 90 minutes of yoga. So, you know, that's just an example of the kind of things that are spawning from this. You know, it's been pretty amazing.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Off with it. One of the things that Stephanie and I just spoke about is, you know, within the township, we don't have a Pine Street, but we have Pine Run, Pine Valley, Pine Mill, and, you know, I think it's worth a discussion about us being able to change those for the month of October as well.
Yeah, and, you know, I've been working closely with John Davis, and I know that this is probably something that could be taken offline, but there's a pretty inexpensive way to go from E to K. It would just be a matter of man or lady power to change that and then take it off when the month is up, but...
Did he just say lady power?
Well, you know, I don't want to say...
Or lady power.
Yeah, lady power, manpower.
Actually, I did speak... John Davis called me because he indicated that he had spoken with you, and they have the ability in their sign shop to do the vinyl kind of peel-and-stick Ks, pink Ks, and that's what they're going to be doing, and he said he could provide them to the township as well.
There you go. We're on our way.
All right.
And then the bulbs, I think, you know, it's... We can work on that if that's something... The board can let me know at some point if that's okay, and we could...
I think it's a great idea. We have our media, we have our reach, electronic reach.
Yeah, that would be...
So I think this is fair to say that I think the board would want this to be part of our blasts.
Oh, that'd be fantastic, yeah.
Information to everyone.
I'll get with you as far as wording and that sort of thing, and then figure out the assets and provide you with whatever you need whenever you need it.
Yeah, and sponsorship opportunity forms that you can send to us so that we can circulate them as well.
That's... Thank you. Yeah, I have a full sponsorship...
Figured.
Yeah.
Might as well tell you just to do it.
Yeah, all right, well, it's coming to you. Expect it by the time I get home.
Thousands of people listening, they're going to be all wanting to do this.
You're on the hook, Barbara.
Right, there you go. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
All right, and then we have a proposal from Park and Rec Chairman, John Bray, on the Park and Rec Building.
Hi, I'm John Bray, Chairman of the Park and Rec Board. This isn't really a proposal, this is really just sort of an update on what we're planning. Right now, the park board is considering, well, first of all, history. I think everybody remembers that the Park and Recreation Department lost our indoor activity space with the shuffling of the Department of Public Works and our new administration building and trailers and everything. And originally, we were going to have a new building over on New Britton Road. That turned out to be kind of silly expensive. And so we sort of tasked ourselves with coming up with an alternative plan to generate indoor activity space for our community. We are pretty intent on making the activity space as self-supporting, as is practical. And so we're focusing on a space that's going to generate some revenue, not just provide space for our many activities. The activities that we've had inside have generated revenue, but not substantial revenue. Whereas we think that if we tweak the design of the building, frankly, making it a little bigger than had been planned, but with a more focused mix of program space, that we'll be able to actually make some money on it. So we're thinking about a 9,000-square-foot building. About 6,000 square feet would be gym space, and about 3,000 square feet would be other. And the other is going to consist of a kitchen and a meeting room, an activity room, bathrooms, of course, maybe a small office. We believe that there will be a need for at least a part-time person to be in attendance at the facility. We're working closely with the Ways and Means Committee. And so in about four to six weeks, we hope to be back with actually a joint presentation, some more specifics about what the building would look like, what kind of revenue we can generate, how much of the cost can be absorbed by user fees, and just generally enough information for you to hopefully give us some support. And so that's where we are right now.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, any visitors or public comment? Hearing none, we're moving on to announcements. We're next meeting on July 17th at 7:00 p.m. But we will be meeting in executive session at 6:00 p.m. It's a future notice there. We'll be talking about personnel issues as intended. We're going to be closed on Wednesday, July 4th, for the big celebration of Independence Day. Bicentennial memorabilia is on sale. We've got Mercer tiles for $20, t-shirts for $10. Bricks, commemorative bricks. If you were in the old administrative building, you can have one of those bricks for $10, hats for $18. And Park Trees, we're still selling oak trees. We're up to 100, we got 100 more we want to sell, and they're $200 each. Upcoming bicentennial events on July 14th. We're doing a Highland Farms History and Music Event, Oscar and Us. It's a sing-along, so please, that's 11:30 at Highland Farms. There's rumor that you will be singing at that event, is that correct? Yeah, I'm going to be doing a solo. I think that's important to know. They asked me to sing, and I said, okay, social suicide. Everyone's going to come now, because I'm going to be like, they're going to make fun of me. Yes, I'm honored that they asked, so I'm going to do it. This is for the good of the order. And July 15th, 7:00 p.m., is our big party at Big Romeo and fireworks and our celebration for our bicentennial. Now, it's something we do every year for July 4th, which is never on July 4th, but we're combining our bicentennial celebration, because we're 200 years old. We're going to put it into the mix for that. All right, so that's July 15th, that's Sunday, 7:00 p.m., Big Romeo. It's $5 a car, only because we need help to park cars and stuff. All right, Thompson Performing Arts Series continues. Tomorrow is the Fabulous Grease Band, a perennial favorite. Karen, they've been, what, 20 years now, coming? 20 years. River of Dreams is June 27th, that's a Billy Joel's group. And then the Quakertown Band... Bank. Quakertown Bank. It's a band. It's the Quakertown Band. Rogers and Hammerstein Review is on July 11th, coincidentally, just a few days before the Oscar sing. July 18th, Lights Out, is a Frankie Valli. And if you were to our gala, they performed at our gala in their amazing Frankie Valli group. Okay, July... Okay, then, moving on. 2018 Discount Park tickets are now available. You can purchase them through the administrative offices in our double-wide over there. Leaf and Yard Recycling is the third Sunday or Saturday of each month, from 9:00 to 11:00. The drop-off for Leaf and Yard Recycling is the New Britton Road entrance to Central Park. And you can get more information online on this and all other events. All right, next item on the agenda, minutes approval from our regular meeting of June 5th, 2018. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
They were voluminous. Is there any correction or any corrections or changes? Suggestions for corrections? All right, hearing none?
I'll make the motion to approve it, but there's one correction.
Okay. What do you got?
On the voting, one of the votes is 5-0.
That wasn't here. Ah, okay, that's corrected. All right, thank you.
So that's my motion.
Thank you so much, that's a good question. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Next item is a petition from the folks who live on Hidden Lane. We've all had a chance to review it. I'm going to give the... Is anybody here from Hidden Lane? Thank you. Do you care to speak to the...
I think the petition says so.
It does. We're going to give our Director of Operations a chance to respond.
We received a petition from the residents of Hidden Lane requesting that the roadway be paved. As of this year for 2018, that is not part of our road program. Just a quick update, our road program will start soon, and we'll be notifying residents when that occurs within the next 30 days. I think the contractor's looking to start sooner than that. We are in the process of evaluating our entire road program, and last board supervisors meeting, the board approved conditionally or tentatively approved, allowed us to move forward with a program to basically objectively evaluate all the roads within the township. And we do that on a regular basis. But this evaluation will give us the opportunity to look at the entire township objectively and then rate and categorize roads and determine how we're going to move forward with our future road programs. I will say this, Hidden Lane is not the worst road, and it's not the best road. Okay? And so I know that, you know, this has been brought forward, and we do road paving in a number of different ways. We have allocated funds for road paving. We also have additional monies, and sometimes we can do additional work with our contractor, equipment rental with operator, and our materials budget, and with our own township staff assisting. So we can look at Hidden Lane. We don't have plans to pave Hidden Lane this year. We can look at it for next year and evaluate it with the overall program and see where it falls. That's, again, one of the reasons for this program, is see where Hidden Lane is with everybody else. We've had requests like this before, and so we'll take into consideration, and it will be brought before the board and discussed. At this point, that's, you know, where we look at it.
Okay.
Has Paul or anybody else gone out and evaluated it since you've received this petition?
No. I mean, I know that there's concerns, and Paul probably knows off the top of his head what condition it's anyway, because he's familiar with it, and he's out there all the time. He's on the street. So there was not a specific evaluation. I know that, and again, like I said, we received other petitions like this for other streets in the municipality.
I did drive down there a couple times, actually. And it doesn't need repairs, there's no doubt about that. And I think one of the things that Dave is trying to convey is there's a hierarchy. Like we're doing Upper State Road, that gets thousands of cars and needs special attention, as opposed to some of the smaller roads, which don't have as many homes on them and as much activity. So it's just not grabbing this one, grabbing that one. It's a structural systematic plan. And I... You want to elaborate on that, Dave, but that's basically, he doesn't just pick up a road and say, let's do this one. And he does them a year ahead of time, so...
So I think what... I think, to clarify, we're... Once you get the program up and running and evaluate, we'll get back to you on kind of where that falls into the plan, right?
Correct, yes, that is kind of where we're...
We're not going to... You're going to be on our radar.
Yeah.
It's been 45 years.
Yeah. Yeah, and there are some real... I don't know, is that a new development down there? Or is it a... is it a, is it old?
No.
Forty-five years.
No, no, but I mean, you know, I'm, we weren't around when that, that was developed, but, um, one thing I learned from Denny, old Denny, who used to be a roadmaster years ago, he said, "All these roads are built on cow paths, and there's not a whole lot of structural, structural support underneath of them. So, when they go, they really go, they just like break apart." Um, and as, as Dave said, um, they do, we do go around, and we used to go around, I hope we still go around. Um, we go around, the supervisors in a bus, and we look at all the roads that need to be done, and, um, and they are ranked based on how bad they are, and then how much traffic they get, but mostly what the state of decrepit is, they are. And then, um, what that, what needs to be done in order to fix them so they don't become more decrepit. So, we get, we get what you got there. Um, but, just so you know, the, the, uh, your petition, um, is well-founded, we're not ignoring you, it's just that we have to put you in the mix of, of things, but at least you're on, like I said, you're on the radar.
I understand.
Yeah.
But it was not a cow path, though.
Okay. Well, what was it?
I remember it, it's a good road.
Was it? Okay.
And it's a good road, and it was a good road.
It was a good road.
It's just 45 years old, right?
Forty-five years old.
We were better 45 years ago.
It's about mine.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so, um, I hope, I hope that answers your question, or addresses your issues. It doesn't help, I know. If anyone wants to say anything more, then I need to send, I need to send you up to the podium. Do you, you care to speak?
I-
You can go to this mic right here, too.
Oh, yeah. Go up to the microphone. 'Cause you're, we're televising live.
Really?
Yep.
You can sit down now.
You have to introduce yourself, please, to-
I'm confused, but, okay. Um, Mike Strom, I live on Hidden Lane also, that's the topic right now. Okay, all right, good. And I'm sorry I'm late, I tried to get here as quick as I could, but, um, I don't know what was said already, but I'm going on about three years living there, at, at the end of the road, and in the time that I've been there, I've seen pretty significant deterioration, um, to the point where I could be blowing leaves clearing out the cul-de-sac, and I'm, pieces of the-
Cul-de-sac.
-top layer are coming up with a leaf blower. Um, I have two kids, there's four other kids on there, or there's six other young kids on the road, a lot of playing, a lot of going on, it's just not the safest, nicest-looking environment, riding bikes, skateboarding, doing all the things that we all do. Um, furthermore, even when snow removal, plowing, we're now, I'm sure you all are, seeing, you know, pieces of the road now in the yard. So, you're talking yard equipment, um, you know, pieces of, of rock and all that coming up, and the, the mowers, and the, and, you know, leaf blowing, and weed whacking, and everything. So, it's not just the look of the potholes, it's, it's the use, it's what's happening to our yard, it's what's happening to everything, you know, associated with it. So, you know, in the three years, I love the road, I'm never leaving, um, but it'd be nice to have good use of the nice, quiet road that we have in the way that it's intended to be used. And it's kind of difficult to do that with the way it is now.
Since, since we won't be able to repave it this year, but it's, you know, like we said, it's on the list, can Dave, can we-
It's not on the list.
For, for next year?
Maybe, it may be.
Maybe it's on the radar.
It's on the radar, yes, thank you, it's on the radar. Um, if there are potholes, is that something we could have-
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't ignore regular routine maintenance, and if there are potholes, um, which, more, more than like not, the, the guys are out filling potholes before someone calls and reports a pothole, because that's just part of our routine maintenance to get out after storms, when things start to warm up, the freeze-stall cycle ends, and everything starts to really fall apart, the guys are on it. Um, the, the spalling of the material, it, it was a tar and chipped road, um, so, you're probably seeing some of that old tar and chip that unfortunately is like a scab, it's layer upon layer, and it starts to come off and scab off, and especially when this, this the plows come through, all the material is getting tore up, 'cause it's really loose.
Right.
And it's, it's somewhat past its life cycle, as I said before, it's, it's not the, it's not the best road in the township, it's not the worst.
Understood.
So, and that's what we're trying to do, is evaluate them holistically across the entire township next, this year coming up into next year, to develop a more robust road program. And, and also, too, we have, we just went through our budget work session, we work with a limited amount of funds each year, okay, to, to pave roads, and so, we have to balance the need versus the, the cost and the budget.
Right.
So, that's all, all together.
Right. I understand.
Yeah.
And I'm, I wouldn't even begin to tell you, you know, you're right or wrong, I just know what, what we see, and we, I have talked with a couple of the guys who have come out and filled the potholes, and what's, what was explained to me is that the, some of the, I wouldn't even call them potholes, they're just large, very large areas that are, go down about that deep, that essentially can't be filled as a pothole, because it'll just continue to come off. But those areas have gone from, you know, that big to now this big, and all that material is, that's again what I can blow off with my leaf blower. Not that I'm trying to destroy our road, but trying to get rid of the, the leaves, and then, you know, part of the road comes up. So, I may be part of the problem, I don't know, but I'm hoping there's a solution.
Thank you, Mr. Strom.
But I appreciate you taking us into consideration.
Yes, we will, we have. All right, um, does, does anybody want to say anything else about this?
We all good?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Um, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. But if you have to go home and have dinner, that's okay. We understand. Thank you.
But you can watch us on TV.
If we leave, are we further down the list?
No. No.
Thank you very much.
Good question.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, um, hm, Warrington Township has requested a letter of support, I think we sent it already, yes?
No.
No, we didn't?
We were holding it.
All right, so, there's a draft in there, is everyone okay that we support Warrington Township in this endeavor?
Yes.
Sure.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the letter?
I'll move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll send it out, thank you. Uh, next item is the Fitzgibbons, Fitzgibbons, say that for me, Fitzgibbons subdivision, and the billing dispute over that.
Um, I think this is a matter that we're dealing with the Finance Department. Um, as everyone knows, the Fitzgibbons tract went through the land development process. The project was then, um, turned over to a builder to complete the one-lot subdivision. Um, there have been disputes with our Finance Department as to who owned what when. Um, he just, uh, finally sent a letter, he sent it to care of the Board, um, he wanted to make sure that you saw it. Um, he actually, I actually called and reached out to him, and he just wanted to make sure that you were aware of it. I'm sure that, um, with our Finance Department and myself, um, getting involved now, that we will, um, resolve his concerns.
Okay, just one question, if you don't mind. Um, is it accurate that he just received these bills in 2018 from May 2016?
No, he's received them previously.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'll leave it to you guys. Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the only question I had.
That was the question I had, yeah.
Okay, good. All right, moving along, uh, reports from the solicitor.
We will discuss my item later in the agenda, Madam Chairperson.
Thank you. Chief?
Uh, yes, just to piggyback off the, uh, 3 o'clock budget work session and, uh, staffing, um, I received a letter of resignation from Officer Pekash yesterday. Um, he, his last day of employment will be with the township on July 1st. Um, with that being said, there's actually, we currently have an active list. Um, if you recall, I think it was two months ago, we hired Officer Nathlin off the list. Um, I do have another acceptable candidate, um, that, I guess, the consensus of the Board at this point, I would like to move forward with the conditional offer of employment, so I can quickly replace Officer Pekash and move forward and keep our staffing levels consistent.
I would make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Is this someone that's already been interviewed?
Yes, I was part of the interview.
He was part of the, he was part of the process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if it was a pre-screen or, yeah, okay.
Good candidate. There's a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
How long was, that name sounds recent.
He, Officer Pekash, he started, he didn't even, he's not even finished four years.
He taking another law enforcement job, or do something else?
Uh, he's, wants to go work in the town where he resides.
Oh, where's that?
Bedminster.
Where?
Well, more power to it.
Bedminster.
So, somebody, uh, scarfed him up, after they trained him.
Yes. That's, unfortunately, that's the way it works. Um, the only other thing I have is, um, the, Bucks County is having their, another hazardous waste recycling, uh, collection date this Saturday, I think it's 9 to 3, or 9 to 1, I forget.
Oh, look at me.
It's posted, um, it's at Central Bucks South High School, which is, I'd just like to see. Um, rather than dumping the stuff down the sewers and stuff with all the conversations we have going, if you have anything hazardous, there's a, I know if you go into our crime watch program through, there's a, the date, and the time, the location's all posted there for you, so.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Um, Dave?
I do not have anything. Skip to Mario.
And I do not have-
Mario?
And I don't have anything.
Pardon? Nope, nope, okay. Okay, Dave, no? Manager?
Um, I just have a request to be able to attend the 104th Annual ICMA Conference. As you know, I'm the Northeast Regional Vice President, um, and would like to be able to attend the conference in Baltimore.
Make a motion, we approve the ICMA, uh, conference.
All in favor? Aye. All right, thank you. Go to it. Um, Supervisors, uh, let's start with Ms. Howery.
Thank you. Um, the first part of business is, um, at the Park and Recs meeting last time, there were several announcements, but we did have a, um, discussion about the building. One of the items was that Turk Park Playground is now open, uh, which is fantastic for when you have kids playing baseball. Um, I went to the EAC meeting as well, um, and, uh, one of the items that they have ongoing until November is every last Saturday at the native plant garden behind Kids Castle. Um, there's a workday, um, between 9 and 11, so the next one is on the 30th, 30th of this month. Um, there's also, um, there is also an Audubon, a, a way that the EAC can get extra funding. Um, you, if you go on Audubon, PAAudubon.org slash get dash involved, and click on Bird Habitat Recognition Program, you can sign up your home as a, um, a bird habitat-friendly home, and our EAC will get $10 for each signup. That's approved.
Yay, oh, I can do that.
Yep, um, and I believe that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Where do we go? Habitat where?
Uh, it's PA dot Audubon dot org slash get dash involved, and then click on Bird Habitat Recognition Program.
Great.
And there's an online form and a paper form.
Thank you. Excellent. Okay, thanks. Ken, you have anything?
Uh, two items. We had our first Pension Advisory Committee meeting on, uh, June the 11th. Sinclair Salisbury's the Chair, Ed Denton is the Vice Chair. Uh, the first, this first meeting was more of a introductory-type meeting, and also just to get people lined up and show them where the information is, to get them educated so they can come hitting the ground running at the next meeting. And their meetings, they decided to have it the second Tuesday of every month at 4:30. So, it was a very successful kickoff. Uh, the other one is, we had a-
Ken, I think that's the second Monday.
Second Monday, you're correct.
I'm sorry.
The second Monday, yeah.
I apologize to interrupt.
No, it was Monday. Um, the other item was, uh, traffic. Um, we had a-
We have traffic.
We had an interesting discussion, uh, 'cause there's a, some residents that came in and talked about Spring Valley, and what would, to me, what was interesting about this, uh, discussion was, one of, um, the residents is an attorney, so he was, he came in very well-prepared. He was reading statutes and doing all kinds of stuff.
Oh, great.
I mean, and, and he was, you know, he was doing his homework, and so, it was, it was interesting to see how he was presenting his, his information. But then it led into another discussion after they finished their, what they came to talk about, um, and really what the role of Traffic Committee is, is in, and how we, should they be identifying other traffic calming techniques and stuff like that. So, it was a, a very, uh, dynamic discussion, Chief, would you say, yeah?
I would say so.
So, uh, it was good, so, um, we're hoping for some good stuff coming out of traffic.
Excellent.
That's it.
Thank you. Rick, you ready?
Yeah, uh, my house is a deer-friendly house, so I, you know, if I can register them if I'll get the $10 or not, but they certainly love my plants. Um, a couple of short ones, um, had the trail dedication, as I hope you saw in the paper, et cetera, and just, a lot of the things you don't see behind the scenes, I mean, for, for someone to organize all that, to get it to go smooth, I don't know, six or seven different organizations, two neighborhoods, the, the waste, uh, anyway, it went all flawlessly, and that's, kudos to Stephanie, she did a really, really good job. Good job.
And made Channel 6 news.
And, uh, and made Channel 6 news.
Yeah.
Um, the Sewer Committee, we're, we're trying to get some cooperation from Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, and, and to be, to be nice, they're not, they're not very cooperative, I, I mean, we've worked with, in about six months now, just trying to get one of them to come and help us move forward in our process, and, uh, we, we hit nothing but roadblocks. I mean, all the other organizations, and Stephanie will correct me later, what have you, that we work with, DEP, PennDOT, et cetera, et cetera, are manageable and realistic, but Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority is just very uncooperative, let's leave it at that. Uh, also, attended the Planning Commission, which is going to come up later on our agenda, so I'll, I'll hold off on that. I'm done.
All right.
Just a question for Rick. So, if they're being, Bucks County Water and Sewer is being uncooperative, what type of actions can we do to get their attention?
Stephanie has done everything but prey on their doorstep, and, and, you know, you send them an email, they forget you, and then a month later, "Yeah, oh yeah, we can do that." "Oh, Thursdays aren't good, well, how about Wednesdays? We'll get back to you." Well, now, the, so, I, I- You need to go to the Board members. I mean, this is Ben Jones, this is what I'm talking about.
You need to go to the board members.
I, I think, just, so the rest of the board knows, the Public Water and Sewer Advisory Committee has gathered a lot of data on properties sort of east of 611, and they don't know how to interpret some of the data, and they have questions about, you know, the data and the information, and, and what Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority operates, and how this area, you know, fits into the overall projects and areas and things that they do. And they just want someone to come. They sent them a letter with some requests of, with information, and they really are just looking for someone from there to attend a meeting. On Thursdays does not work for the Executive Director of the Authority. We've asked for other staff to come, and unfortunately, the, you know, schedules have not worked out at this time.
So the, the issues you're having have nothing to do with the sewer project?
Oh, no, 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 and I wanted to make sure we made that clear. That has nothing to do-
It's not clear.
That's why I always get to the emergency.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to-
Which is disheartening, just, for me, from a greater concept. I mean, we're just entered into this huge partnership with them, and then we can't, you know, we can't even get a meeting set with them on things.
Well, how long you been trying this a little bit that way?
Six months.
All right, well.
Jeff, you suggest a, a letter from Barbara and Stephanie, or?
It's, I don't-
I would think that you ought to have a contact between this board chair and the chair of the Authority.
Yep, I'll do that.
Yeah.
Not, not the Executive Director.
This is the second time we've had to write, have Barb send a letter, just to get them to respond to something. The first was about the sewer project, I'm just, you know what? That should be noted. Just, just, I, I, I'm not make, I'm not being an apologist for Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, but I guess I've had 15 years' experience with them on this board, and they really have put out a lot of time to this board and to our questions and to our committees, to get nowhere. So, I mean, I, I remember huge blowups and debacles when they've, they've put a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of energy into answering our questions, you know, participating in our surveys, looking at our reports, talking to us about all these, these, these potential fixes to our septic systems and whatever. And then it go nowhere. So, I mean, they have put a lot of time into this township. And I don't have that history, I'm just saying. So, I'm just saying, they, they might be just tired, and now we just went through this whole sewer study with them, and they're doing the sewer project. So I'm not, like I said, I'm not apologizing for them, but I, I get where, every time a volunteer committee of the, of the township asks a question, and they don't respond right away, I'm a little, I can't, I can't say that they're right or wrong to do it, but I can understand, you know, what authority does this committee have, and they're, the way they look at it, for them to be putting this time into it to go nowhere, year after year after year.
I, I can, I understand that.
I'm giving that perspective.
I understand that, but then they should tell us that.
Well, I don't-
And they should come back and say, I can't do this for you, so.
And six months ago, they did wait, yeah. And six months ago, they did say they wanted to focus on Phase 1 and get Phase 1.
Well, and that's what they did.
And now that, I think, the committee is anxious that now that Phase 1 is kind of moving forward, let's talk about where everything fits in, and whether or not the information they've gathered is worthy information. Do they need more?
So, let me, let me have what it is that you're looking for, and then I will make the calls.
That's, that's fine.
Is that fine?
Just the courtesy of the response, that's fine.
Because, you know, I'll, I'll get down, I'll get down in the dirt, no pun intended, in the, in the septic systems with them, to get the, get the help we need, if that's, you know, if, if it's, it's just, you know, I'll get it. I'll get it done. Just let me know. All right, what else you got?
I'm done.
Okay.
Ryan.
Ryan.
I just have one quick thing. Bike and Height met this morning, of course, who did the trail dedications, but we've got a, we have a meeting regarding the Turk Road Trail. Keith, who was just in, who did the Pine de Pink, he actually is, was instrumental in really getting this thing going, in terms of getting a survey done with the Turk Road. I say Turk Road, but there's a lot of different, it's like a big square, so all the residents will be invited to attend a meeting that it could potentially impact, as long as anyone else. We actually had two individuals at the meeting this morning that were like, very excited. They wanted to put the hard press for, to run on their road. But that will take place July 24th at 7:00 PM at the Doylestown Library. So again, residents will get a letter, but anybody else, you know, around that area, if you want to attend.
That's great, thanks. I have, you've, you received a letter from Mr. Kiss, Emil Kiss, who is our vacancy board chairman, has resigned. He's moving out of, he's moving to where most smart people go when they become a certain age, to Florida. So he's moving out of the township.
Back though.
And he, so we have a vacancy on our vacancy board, so I think we have to appoint someone within 30 days.
Yes.
So we'll be interviewing, anyone accepting, we'll be accepting resumes and interviewing and get someone appointed. I need a motion to accept his resignation.
I move to accept.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Sadly, we'll miss him. I'd like to propose the, Alvin Clark is a new member to our bicentennial committee. He's a 75-year resident of Doylestown Township, and he's just a delight, and we would love to have him, so I would, I make the motion that Mr. Clark be appointed to our bicentennial committee.
Second.
Thank you. Call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to announce that our flag committee has been comprised of Stephanie Mason, myself, Ted Felstein, Mary Lou Parry, Alan Fetterman, Gina Rubel, and Bill Milnazik. All, some of those folks have special skills and talents, so we bring them to our, we'll be meeting mid-July to pick one of the 15 or 16 entries into the flag competition. And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to sadly tell everyone that Dr. Joshua Felstein died this morning, and he'll be soily missed, and we're having a private ceremony for, service for him, and then in the future, it'll be something a little more public. So he's, he's, he's going to be missed, he was on our open space forever, and he was just a real treasure, a real gem in this community, so. And Ted Felstein, his son is on our bicentennial, he's just been a, he's been a gem as well, so. Just wanted everyone to keep him and the family in, in their prayers. Yes, you want to take the?
Just wanted to know if the family's accepting anything, like, is there a place to send something?
We haven't been advised of that yet.
Haven't been told yet.
We haven't been told yet.
All right, on to new business. We have the proposed ratification of the final 2018 Municipal Waste Management Plan. We have a whole lot of information that's been provided to us, and it's something that we have to adopt. We're going to be part of the Bucks County Plan. Everyone had the opportunity to review. Stephanie, you want to speak to it?
Jeff, very briefly, you have my memo. This is something that we have participated in for many, many, many years, and this is the next 10-year update, which will take us through, and take the county and the municipalities participating in it through 2028. And it's how the waste, not a great topic, but how, but something we have to do, how we handle municipal solid waste in the, in the communities and in the county. So I would ask that the board consider ratification of the resolution.
All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, thank you. Next is the proposed, what, proposed zoning change for Tradesville Public Improvements. Now Jeff, you want this one, right?
Well, I'll give the board some background and where we are at present. And obviously, the only action tonight, if you're so inclined, or this afternoon, depending upon how you read the clock, would be to authorize the advertisement of the ordinance. In any event, in late winter of 2014, Representative Toll Brothers approached the township at a staff meeting, talking about doing a lot-averaging subdivision for the Bray property on Bristol Road, which is obviously in Tradesville. That plan would have yielded 25 single-family dwellings. Very little conversation took place for the better part of a year, but by the time late 2015 came around, they not only entered into the agreement with Mr. and Mrs. Bray that they talked about before, but also entered into an agreement with the owners of the long tract, which would now encompass 51.7 acres, being the totality of the then project that was under agreement with Toll Brothers. There were early discussions about street furniture improvements, a trail, public water and public sewer. And in fact, early on, Toll Brothers suggested to the staff that it would be easier and less costly if public water was brought to the site from Warrington Township. Your Planning Commission in mid-2015 reviewed a sketch plan that showed 41 lots with the additional acreage, and at this time, the township was actively involved in the Pebble Hill Woodridge Public Sewer Project moving forward. Obviously, the completion of that project would be instrumental in providing a method means for Toll Brothers to bring public sewer to the site. In 2016, there were discussions about, with Toll, about facilitating bringing public sewer to the site, and how that would impact the Pebble Hill Woodridge Project. In 2017, Toll Brothers then entered into an agreement with the owners of the Schmitz property, which added about an acre and a quarter to that site, now leaving a gross site area of 53.66 acres. In that timeframe, Toll Brothers suggested to the township, if there could be any density improvements available, if Toll Brothers would contribute some significant dollars towards the Pebble Hill Woodridge Project, since the main interceptor line would be necessary for Toll Brothers to provide public sewer to the site. The township then advised, and I'm talking about not the supervisors, the township then advised, will make a proposal. A draft ordinance was submitted by Toll Brothers, that's been the subject of numerous meetings with your Planning Commission, as well as the staff, and I believe the Planning Commission, and Mr. Colletta can correct me if I'm wrong, has made a recommendation suggesting that the proposed ordinance be advertised. The ordinance would establish the Tradesville Public Improvement Overlay District, consisting of four tax parcels, the purpose of which would be to fund the need for public sewer service. That would include the Pebble Hill and Woodridge Project, and the plans at this point do provide for bringing public water from DTMA to the site. The boundaries of the, of the overlay district would be the four properties along Bristol Road. If adopted, the ordinance would provide for a B4 use in the overlay district that would allow single-family attached townhouse dwellings at a density of no more than three dwelling units per acre. It would include various minimums, an open space requirement of 40%, a maximum pervious surface restriction, restrictions on the length of a building, and would require the submission of architectural renderings. Units would be either condominium units, there would be townhouses, however, or they would be C ownership interests, that would be, obviously, as I mentioned, old townhouses. It would provide that the site would be connected to public water and public sewer through the DTMA and through the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, or the requirements, as far as the environmental issues and the like, would apply, except it would be an agreement, if the ordinance was adopted, that they could encroach in the riparian buffer up to 15% for the purpose of doing stormwater and other improvements. Furthermore, at the issuance of each building permit, the developer would contribute $27,600 toward the cost of the off-site sewer facilities. Off-site is important, because it would not be a contribution toward onsite sewer improvements required by Toll Brothers. The board's being asked to authorize the advertisement of the ordinance, so that the board may conduct public hearing or hearings with respect to the propriety of approving this ordinance as the creation of a Tradesville Overlay District. So with that in mind, that's where we are. I think I generally spoke about the history, and Mr. Colletta can talk about anything that may be relevant as far as Planning Commission discussions.
Right.
Well, that's, that's a good point. This just gets the ball started. Still going to have to go through land development, still going to have to go through the rigors of the Planning Commission, even though we've met quite often, and maybe even sent each other Christmas cards, we've been together so much. But this just gets the ball started, and it's still going to have to go through the same process that every other developer goes, goes through, which is traffic and trails and those kinds of things. So I mean, I, I make a motion we advertise ordinance for the Tradesville, Tradesville Public Improvement.
All right, there's been a motion to advertise, is there a second?
Second.
Could I have a question first? If this is approved and they can build, what's the density that they can build? Did you answer that?
Well, I think it's, it's three per acre, gross acre.
I thought there was a, there's a total of how many? You were asking how many homes?
137.
Yeah.
Right.
137.
Town, townhouses, you know, and I think it's age-targeted, if I'm not mistaken.
That's what they indicated, the Planning Commission. Mm-hmm.
Like 55 and older community targeted.
But not age-restricted, but age-targeted.
Targeted.
Got it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other questions on the?
Interesting question.
All in-
Siri has a question.
Siri has a question. All right, I'm going to call the question, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
It will probably be in August, because we have to provide the 30-day notice to the Bucks County Planning Commission and the like.
Okay. All right, well, I know that's been a long time coming, so, good work on that. All right, improvements in the Dog Park. Kathy? Kathy Brown? No?
Kathy, I mean, you all have the information, I'll go present, but do you have any?
We do.
Yes, mhm, mhm.
Do you have any questions?
Us? Please. Question? I, I didn't, and I'm making a motion that we-
I know what it is.
I-
Agree with the Dog Park Advisory Board, and they can spend those funds for the fence and other amenities?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Have a question?
Never mind. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would, I would like some clarification on, there's two estimates in here, one for $19,000 and one for $10,000. So it's the whole- Now I need more clarification. You have to come to the mic.
You need to take the microphone. Sorry, Kathy.
There is, there's Glenial Fence Company, Gorkon, and-
Okay.
We, Kathy Brown, Chairman of the Dog Park Advisory Board. We had three quotes. It was difficult to get quotes to move the fence. Three quotes. One was the 19, one was a little less than the 10, and the one that was 10 did, is proposing to move the fence and reinstall it as it was done to begin with. So that's why that's the one selected. Does that answer?
It's three quotes.
Which one?
Is it the one for 6,097?
I'm looking at the first one for $19,000. It says fence relocate.
Yes.
And then I look at the next one, and it talks about moving fence.
Okay.
So are we relocating more than one fence? I, I don't know.
Two different quotes. They're different, yeah.
So there's, oh, these are quotes.
Yes.
I was reading that you need to do all this work.
No, 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 those were-
I thought that the total was 29,000, not 19,000.
No, 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 no.
No, 10,000.
Okay. I understand now. Okay.
Are we good?
Yeah, we're, we're good, thank you.
Is there a motion?
Motion and a second.
All right, calling the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, you're good to go. Thank you.
Before we go on the next topic, I think that Stephanie circulated the fireworks ordinance, so you guys take a look at it. Any questions? We'll talk about it, authorizing the advertisement at the next meeting. Have any comments or questions, unless you're ready to go tonight?
I'm okay.
I, I would go tonight, because I would like to see it in place before July 4th.
It won't happen, because it's a zoning amendment, it has to go to the Bucks County Planning Commission for at least 30 days, so.
You would have had to, like, authorize it at your May 1 meeting, probably.
But at least get it done in the summer.
It'll get done before Labor Day, not that, so it'll be July, Labor Day.
Fireworks all summer.
Yeah, and we still have our fire marshal's permits that are required, so that doesn't change, and, and the, they have to follow the fire, the code that's referenced there, and so the realtor can be able to do fireworks. But we do have the tents where they do ground displays, which they've always been allowed to do, which are not the up-in-the-air fireworks.
The projectile kind, yeah.
So if you're so inclined, just need authorization to advertise the fireworks ordinance?
I make a motion we advertise a fireworks ordinance, and if there's a second, I've got two questions.
All right.
The, the G5, temporary structure is located, if you go to the next page, those distances, Jeff, is that law? I was just curious why-
That came from the standard that was being circulated throughout most of the state.
Yeah.
And then Sinclair and Stephanie met about those elements, and came from Sinclair and Stephanie.
Just-
If you want to make it less at the hearing, you can. You can't make it greater at the hearing, so if you want a further distance, you need to let me know now. If you think you want to do less, then you can do that at the hearing.
Well, I don't know what my colleagues want to do. It just seems strange that after a few years and that some permanent structures come up, now we're letting these temporaries get moving on their turf, so to speak. And to me, that just seemed, if somebody builds a permanent structure or facility to sell fireworks and do all this, that, to, to, to let the temporaries now have more encroachment room from where now they can, they have to be five miles away, at 2023, we're going to let them be two miles away. I'm not sure of the rationale, and why are we making it harder on the brick and mortar places and easy on the temporaries? That's my question.
And that came from the statute.
I think Sinclair reviewed the statute, that's where it came from.
Yeah, and they left it from the statute. They, we didn't, we didn't play with that.
Well, if that's what it is, that's what it is. I just, I don't know what the board thinks. I don't know, I didn't change anything, but.
I'm, I'm totally okay with that. Doesn't matter to me at all.
Yeah.
You're okay with the way it's written?
Yeah.
My only second question was, we also talked about doing a, a sidebar, or a, looking at the ordinance for the residents and how they use them, and how's that going, or?
That's part of it, they're covered as well, they can't-
No, no, that's the use, our use ordinance for residents, how close to the houses can they fire them, and that kind of thing.
They have to be more than 150, that's in here somewhere, they have to be more than 150 feet away.
Don't we have an ordinance for this?
Yeah, any structure containing, containing consumer fireworks is defined here in-
Yeah, that's sale. I think he's talking about what you could do with your own house.
This is sales. I'm talking about use, right?
Like, if you buy them somewhere and want to set them off in your backyard.
Well, we're saying that if you want to sell them, all these conditions apply, and I, I'm okay with that. But we also talked about use. We, we have an, an ordinance, I thought, and we talked about looking at it and tightening it or loosening it or whatever, and, and-
That's not applied to residential homes. This does not apply to residential homes.
So you'll need to go further into that.
If you read 1A, isn't that on use? Such issue will be located within 1,500 feet of any...
No, it's all under sale fireworks.
It's only for the sale.
Right. This is just for selling and temporary and brick and mortar.
Right.
And we have, I thought, an ordinance, and we talked about it meeting before, that we were going to look at it to see if it still applies, and that's what we wanted to do. Evidently, we didn't get to that step.
I believe it's mentioned somewhere in one of your nuisance ordinances.
Yeah, and it's also in the, in the fire marshal with, they need permits and stuff to, if you're going to, if they're going to light off fireworks, not, anyone lights off fireworks, they need to have permits from the fire marshal. That's in our ordinances, that's in our ordinances now.
Why don't we, why don't we, why don't we, instead of talking like we don't know what we're talking about, how about at the next meeting or whenever, we provide you with all the regulatory...
For residential use.
Ordinance we have for individuals' use on their own properties messing with fireworks.
That's a good idea.
Good, okay.
I'll have the fire marshal attend too.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, Rick?
No.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor advertising ordinance?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, now we have the next, is a zoning hearing board application for M. Zimmerman, a 308 Pine Run Road, requesting a special exception.
I'd leave that matter to the zoning hearing board.
I don't have a problem with that. Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Then we have the other zone, wait.
Yep.
You have another one, right?
Yeah.
REI Solutions.
REI Solutions. I'm not inclined to leave this to the zoning hearing board. I don't know how everybody else feels about it. I don't understand the hardship here.
I tend to agree.
Yes, I was going to speak to that as well.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
You're the boss, go ahead.
Go ahead, the zoning officer, yes. I think this is one that we would want to send the solicitor's office, if not fully in opposition, definitely to be there to represent our interests. I think the previous owner did some things to the property without code enforcement knowledge, and they want to kind of continue to be able to utilize all the rooms improvements...
Legal improvements?
Yes, thank you, that's a good, good word, thank you. To the site. I recognize that the site, regardless, is, needs to have the holding tank because their septic system is shot and there's no public sewer there. I totally understand that, and the health department has already provided that. But in terms of what was done previously, and should it be allowed to be continued, I would question that greatly.
Well, I think we should send somebody in total opposition.
Okay.
I agree.
I need three of you to agree, agree.
Make that motion.
I agree.
I want you to make a motion, yep.
I make a motion, we...
Okay, go ahead.
One second.
That we send a representative to work out the details at zoning hearings.
No, that's not, that's not...
To oppose.
To oppose it at, at the zoning hearing.
In its entirety.
In its entirety.
All right.
That's my second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And one comment before you wrap up.
What?